Good evening. If I can have everybody's attention, we'll get this Thursday, October 20th, '22, board meeting started here. If, Ms. Samfield, if you call this, call to, I don't know, I'll call it to order. I gotta learn how to read, sorry.
Here.
Eric Leonard, here. Ian Loughlin, Warren.
Here.
Here. Earlier, you want to do it? Last weekend, we lost another family member of Jeff City Public Schools, Ms. Erin Carl. And so if you guys would please take this moment with us and moment of silence in her honor, think about her family and her friends and know that we're thinking about her. Thank you. If you would please rise and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, underground, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Motion by Ms. Leonard, second by Mr. Inlo. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. As a habit, the agenda has been approved for tonight. F, approval of the regular meeting minutes from the September 22nd meeting right here and the work session on September 29th. I'd entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
So moved by Ann.
Second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay or no. As a habit, the meeting minutes from the last, from the 22nd and the work session have been approved. Moving on, student champions, Dr. Boyou.
Good evening. I'm excited to have all six students here tonight, three students from Capital City and three from Jeff City High School. So I'm going to call the Capital City students first so they can get back to their homecoming festivities that they are waiting to get back to. So first up is Cole Hankins. Cole is the son of Matt and Gina Hankins. Gina is one of our JC teachers here and he is in AP US History or has had AP US History, AP Government, AP Psychology, AP Biology, AP Calculus. He is currently taking a college world lit course online. He has lettered in both soccer and track. He has competed in the JC versus CC weightlifting meet. He is a member of National Honor Society, a member of STUCO. He's a leader of FCA. He has lettered in varsity soccer and track all four years. He mows lawns and other yard work. He plans to go to Harding University in Circe, Arkansas, and he is planning on becoming a physician's assistant. Ashley York from Capital City High School. Ashley is the daughter of Michelle and Sean York. She is in AP Physics, AP Statistics, AP Language, AP Psychology, AP Government, AP has taken AP US History, AP Calc, AP Biology. She has received the Hawthorne Bank Award. She was a, so track and field state four by eleven, so did you place four by one?
Yeah, we placed four.
Or in the state. A vice president of student council, a member of FCA, a member of National Honor Society, track and field. She is currently a River Region Credit Union bank teller, and that was why she wasn't, couldn't be here last month, right? You had to close? And she is attending Mizzou in their pre-med program.
Awesome.
Allison Shinawark from Capital City High School. Allison is the daughter of Randy and Tasha Shinawark. She has taken seven AP classes, three dual credit courses, including two project lead the way classes and three honors classes throughout high school. She is a member of the symphonic orchestra for three years, received the National Rural and Small Town Scholar recognition. She was a bright flight qualifier with a 35 ACT score. She is accepted to and attending Ag Discovery Camp at North Carolina State University and Life Sciences Quest at Mizzou, performed her first solo at the Ice Show and witnessing a corpse flower in bloom.
Wow.
She has been a figure skater for nine years. She has played community orchestra for eight years, played golf for two years, active member of National Honor Society, CCHS Theater, Gardening Club, and Missouri Master Naturalist. She worked at Trinkline Greenhouses and she is majoring in plant science with a concentration in biotechnology. She's been accepted to Mizzou but still waiting to hear back from some out of state schools. Congratulations.
What does she do on Tuesdays? That sounds like a long Monday. Good Lord.
I can do Jeff, you want to do them all together?
It's the same, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, from Jeff City High School, Riley McKee. Riley is the daughter of Ryan and Latasha McKee. She has been a member of AP Calculus, AP Physics, AP Biology, AP Government, AP US History, academic all-conference two times, freshman GPA award, all-district girls soccer two times, all-conference girls soccer two times, a member of Lady J Soccer, Sporting Columbia Soccer, National Honor Society. She is also a sports supervisor with the YMCA and she is attending Drury University to become a physician assistant. From JC High School, David Nichols. David is the son of Craig and Melissa Nichols. He is a member of National Honor Society. He is in dual credit college algebra. He is a member of the mechatronics program at Nichols and Schools USA Competition Program of Robotics and Programming. He is a member of the Mid-Missouri Old Car Club, Boy Scouts, Technology Student Association President. He is a line cook at Texas Roadhouse. He is a radio enthusiast, is receiving his ham license to fix shortwave radios, correct? Kind of?
To use them.
To use them. He is enrolling at Moberly Area Community College and studying mechatronics.
Nice.
Can you have an old one? Yes. So he is in.
Oh. Nice.
That's your first call.
Stephen is from Jeff City High School. He is the son of Hannah Samuels. He has taken AP US History, AP Biology, AP Calculus, National Honor Society, academic all-state, district champion basketball team member, grade eight tournament, all-tournament team, all-district, second team, which I said CMAC and he told me it was CMAC Conference, I'm always learning. Two-time letter basketball, one-time letter in football, was featured in sports locker article, very involved in basketball. He is undecided of his college, but he wants to play college basketball and professional basketball.
Way smarter than your coach.
If you randomly go to Jeff City High School at 8:00 PM, 5:00 AM, 1:00 in the morning, Stephen will be there shooting jump shots. All the time, nonstop. Mom, if he's telling you he's going there, I'm telling you he's there. Every time I'm there, he's there. He's a great role model. I tell my son, you want to get better, that's what you got to do.
I actually looked for him and he said he told me I could find him shooting that. If you want to come up for a picture.
You can get pictures. Come on. I don't know about you guys, when you see and you hear what our kids, these kids are doing, we got a lot of good things going in our district. We got a lot of great kids leading us. So thank you, guys. Great job. Third item on the agenda tonight, Dr. Hogg, staff champions, more important people in our district.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm honored to present to you tonight eight different district staff champions as well. I've got two different groups here. I'm going to start off with the Nutrition Services staff at Bel Air Elementary, so I'm going to have them come up if they would. We have Angie Johnson. Angie is the kitchen manager and she started with our district in August. Michelle Kraft started with the district in February of 2022. And then Patty Peterson and Tracy Hernandez also started with us just here in August. Although they are new to the district and new to each other as a team working at Bel Air, they function really, really well as a veteran team. In the short amount of time, they have managed to create an atmosphere that is efficient and well-managed and at the same time, a pleasant and fun place to work. We have received numerous compliments about how well they work together as well as how well they work with all of the other staff at Bel Air. They are always willing to go above and beyond to ensure that the students and staff have delicious and nutritious meals. They offer many choices in addition to what is on the menu, allowing students to pick what they want to eat that day. And the kids, they just love them. You can see this when you observe the cafeteria and kitchen and see the camaraderie amongst the staff and students. When you see this, you know they are making a difference and are a shining example of a JC Schools champion. So congratulations to Angie, Michelle, Patty, and Tracy.
All right.
Come on, Mr. Schalls, get up here.
Come on.
Come on, Heidi. Come on.
You don't know why.
You're important.
It's fair, no, it's fair time to show.
Next, I want to say congratulations to four leaders in the area of elementary reading interventions and instruction. Stacy Gregory Angel is the JC Schools Elementary Literacy Coordinator. Lisa Propst is the literacy interventionist at Bel Air. Megan Holliday is the literacy interventionist at Morale Heights. And Fatima Madondo is the literacy interventionist at North Elementary. So we have Megan and Fatima here tonight. Unfortunately, Stacy and Lisa were unable to be here because they're learning even more about reading right now at a conference in New York, so I don't feel too bad for them. So they're going to enjoy themselves and bring back great things. Like I said, Megan is at Morale Heights and Fatima is at North Elementary. They, along with Lisa and Stacy, worked countless hours last spring and over the summer to support a much anticipated shift in providing targeted literacy interventions. The scope of their work included developing a screening and assessment process to identify students in need of intervention and determining which intervention structure would best meet their needs. Throughout the process, this team created a flow chart of interventions, identified progress monitoring tools to track student response to instruction, and collaborated around setting up schedules that included time for regular in-class observations, collaboration with classroom teachers, and administering assessments. These ladies have continued this work into the school year by leading the literacy interventionist team in ongoing professional development to utilize new instructional resources, collect and track student data, as well as a book study to support new learning. Targeted literacy interventions within JC Schools have undergone a transformation to better meet the needs of our students. These professionals, as well as the entire literacy interventionist team, are true champions for the students of JC Schools. So congratulations.
Next on the agenda is open forum. This allows people to come up and talk about something that's on the agenda item. You have four minutes. Would please ask you to state your name. Is anyone who would like to come forward and speak tonight?
Good evening. Jackie Coleman, 2050 Trenton Court. I'm here to speak on proposals with regard to bond issue, bond upcoming potential, and I think that was in the papers, so I'm hoping that is an item. Okay, thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of previous years, many, 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 many years back, we, the school district purchased land for building an elementary school on the east side. And that was maybe a promise or a wish, but the land is still there. We've had several, at least one campaign where it was on the ballot and along with having one mega high school. So I'm here to speak on behalf of as you begin to explore how you're going to expand or use that bond issue dollars, that you would definitely consider building a new elementary school on the east side because it's needed. We haven't had a new school built in terms of elementary other than Pioneer some years ago, and I don't remember when we did that one. And so I encourage you to really study that issue. We have, and maybe this board has not, put a lot of lipstick on schools that really don't have a footprint for the type of technology and education of young kids. And so this is an opportunity to build a new elementary school on the east side, and I know you're probably saying, well, that means redistricting. Well, everything meant redistricting, even the second high school, and that was something the community wanted. So I would like, I'm just asking you and appealing to you, a new elementary school on the east side, a school that's STEM ready, I think I saw that in the paper the other day with regard to Tharp Garden, which I think is excellent, that we really get those elementary schools where they need to be and continue to build new schools. And maybe the old buildings that were built so many, many, many years ago that don't have a footprint for the type of space that you need to educate young people, maybe we can use those buildings for other type of programs. So I will be coming back to the meetings whenever it's on the agenda, so to explore that as well as, one minute, so, I'm almost, I'm finished. But the reality is, a new building on the east side says to this community, the east side is worthy. It also allows those homeowners, Capital Avenue and all the other schools, homes around there, to realize they have a state-of-the-art elementary school. Right now, there's a stigma attached to the east side, and I think it is, I can't speak for the public, but sometimes that comes out. We got a little bit of that when we built the second high school and JC High School. People maybe didn't want to go to that because of the other reasons. So I'm saying that would really, in this day and age, really expand our east side. It's going to grow regardless of where living, whether it grows or not. To put an elementary school there would just be a diamond in the rough. We have the land. It wouldn't take that much money with the bond issues, we have the bonding capacity. And as I always mention when I come to speak, my 15 years on the school board was to build a second high school, took forever because new board members and new superintendents have their own vision, and I respect that. And we also talked about a new elementary school. So just, I appeal to the board to give a lot of consideration to what you plan to do with the bonding capacity that we might have. And for me, Nichols Career Center, I think that was in the paper, we were remiss when we did not build a new Nichols Career Center. And now we're sitting here with it not being there, but adding on to it, I respect that. Thank you, and I'll be back at the meeting so I can just hear what you're going to do.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to come forward tonight? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, number five on the agenda tonight, reports and communications. Mr. McGraw.
Superintendent McGraw, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, just want to say a couple of congratulations first to CC Tennis. Coach Rawling and his team went back-to-back district champions in tennis, and they have the majority of their team back next year. So their goals are already, we had a pizza party the other day for them, and their goal is already set as a final four, and I told him, if you're going to the final four, you might as well win it. So, but did a great job, great group of kids, and excited for them to go back-to-back. That's not easy. Softball at CC and JC both had great years. Both football teams look to hold on to two seeds in their respective classes. Soccer, volleyball, cross-country, all nearing the conclusion of their regular season. And golf had three state qualifiers. So from a sports standpoint, we had an excellent fall and continue to do so. Transportation, we talked about it last month, it is continued, continuing to be a challenge for us. You know, we've had, you know, we were down drivers obviously going into the school year, and then when we have call-ups and sickness, it puts roots even more behind. Of late, Frank was able and Dawn to have a meeting with Wichita Transit where they've kind of partnered with their area city transit to reduce some of the routes going on and then use their drivers in other places. So we're looking forward to kind of maybe making some plans to partner with Jeff Tran, hopefully for some of the more local routes, and then we can free up drivers as we, as we expand out. But again, we thank the public for their patience and the parents for their patience because it is definitely one of the things that we're struggling with and need to get better at. Homecoming is going on at CC. The homecoming game is tomorrow night. Dance is Saturday. Tomorrow, kind of coupled with those things going on, is a mock car crash. So when you drive by and see potentially a helicopter and fire engines and everything going on there, MoDOT is running it and it's coinciding with buckle-up, phone-down day. And it'll occur in the parking lot of CCHS to show the consequences of driving while distracted, and will involve a number of law enforcement and EMS vehicles responding to the school. So that's going to be tomorrow, so don't get startled. We have told the media about it, but it's a good experience for everyone to go through and see the consequences of something, you know, that can happen when you're driving. Tonight, Thorpe Gordon STEM. I know Jackie had brought it up, and we have Troy here to kind of discuss and give the board a timeline. It is on the agenda about starting it for the school year, so Troy, if you want to, let me come up and...
Thanks for just giving me a few minutes to talk about STEM at Thorpe Gordon. First and foremost, I'm really passionate about STEM, so I'm going to share my own personal story. I was fortunate to be part of a STEM school in Columbia years ago in 2010, and my own children attended school with me at elementary school at Benton STEM. And at that time, I did research that said that students who participated in STEM are twice as likely to go into the fields of science and three times as likely to go into the fields of engineering. And I'm very proud personally to say that my oldest son is currently studying engineering at the University of Missouri Columbia, and he credits it back to his time in elementary school where he got a passion and interest for it. So that's my personal connection to STEM. I'm very passionate about it. As Superintendent McGraw said, we've been exploring the possibility of transitioning Thorpe Gordon Elementary into a STEM school for a little bit of time here. I know conversations have been happening for several years, I believe, about possibilities of a STEM school. Thorpe Gordon was chosen for a variety of reasons. Really, at the top of the list is its close proximity to Jeff City High School, to the Nichols Career Center, and to Lincoln University as well. I think one important component for a STEM school to be successful is that it really has to have a connection to the larger community. It's not just about that individual school. And so that opportunity that you provide the school by having those connections right there are going to be really powerful. The tools and resources that STEM professionals use aren't affordable in an elementary school budget, to be quite honest, but in a secondary budget or in a collegiate budget, absolutely. So they have resources that the students at Thorpe Gordon will be able to experience and be exposed to that true STEM professionals are using on a day-to-day basis. It's just a unique opportunity. Another reason for STEM school at Thorpe Gordon is just that it offers us an opportunity to pilot and vet STEM curriculum that we could expand then across the entire district to all of our elementary schools. It gives us a place to kind of try things out and see how it works and make sure that it aligns with our standards and our curriculum and the way that we teach, and something that we could then push out to other schools across the district as well. It would also give us a group of, you know, local experts there in that building to just evaluate and assess those materials. There's a lot of STEM resources out there, but they're not all wonderful or high quality, so we want to make sure that we could vet them in any way that we can. Would give us an opportunity to really enhance the instruction around problem-based learning as well. I think that being part of a STEM school also just offers a truly unique experience. Again, the only other STEM school, if you're not aware, in the region is really in Columbia. It's been there since 2010, and I can personally attest to the sense of belonging and community and pride that comes with being part of a STEM school. It's just a unique experience. Above all else, STEM school focuses on teaching and learning in a different way. So I want to really stress that the standards that we use, the curriculum that we use in our elementary school, even a STEM school, is no different than the other elementary schools. What's different is the way we approach instruction and learning in that building. We really allow students to kind of build on their own natural curiosity, to ask questions, to look for answers, just like scientists and engineers and mathematicians do in the real world every day, right? We want them to have the opportunity to think like an engineer, to think like a scientist on a day-to-day basis. In turn, using that method of instruction should increase achievement as well, which is our ultimate goal. We want all of our students to be more successful. We have many big decisions to make before transitioning Thorpe Gordon into a STEM school, and those decisions really range from the look and feel of the spaces to those instructional changes. So as you know, Thorpe Gordon is already scheduled for renovations this summer, just like Morale Heights had this past summer. The district is given a unique opportunity at this very moment to think about Thorpe Gordon in maybe a different way. We recently were able to visit with Architects Alliance and review the proposed plans that were previously proposed plans, and we were able to make a few tweaks that we could actually create some unique STEM spaces in Thorpe Gordon. One of those would be a STEM lab that's connected directly to the library space. This would be a STEM lab that gives students an opportunity to maybe work on projects that you can't really work on in a classroom because you can't have those things out all day long because there's just not enough space, there's too many things going on in a classroom. So they could have some projects here that they could have continuing projects. Would also connect to the library, and in and of itself, the library makes it an even larger space for STEM activities for the students, so just one opportunity that we've talked about. I will say too that Ms. Skaggs, she's here this evening, the principal of Thorpe Gordon has created a STEM leadership team as well in her building, and that small cohort of teachers and staff are currently exploring opportunities to maybe visit other STEM schools across the state or even the country. They're looking for opportunities to get information, ideas, and to be able to kind of replicate those ideas or maybe even improve upon them, make them even better for Thorpe Gordon. We also need to consider the hopes and desires of the teaching staff, the students and the families of Thorpe Gordon. families of Thorpe Gordon, as well as his community right now. Um, to that end, Thorpe Gordon is already planning for later this fall to host a World Cafe to get more input from stakeholders about what it could look like, what are the possibilities, what are our hopes, what are our dreams, what is our vision for a Thorpe Gordon STEM school? Um, it's important to stress too that we will not be changing the, the enrollment boundaries for Thorpe Gordon. That's going to stay the same. All the students living in Thorpe Gordon attendance area will have this unique opportunity um, to learn through STEM. At the same time, we also want to consider opportunities to increase enrollment perhaps um, by allowing other students maybe from across the district to attend the new STEM school through maybe a lottery system or something in the future. The current enrollment of Thorpe Gordon is actually below capacity right now. We have fewer students in the building than it could hold, so we do have room to add more students, um, but that's conversations to be had um, down the road. Um, I really want to stress that this is a process, right? It takes time to do this work. Um, in my previous experience, we, we took about a year to kind of plan out what we were doing, and even though there were instrumental changes happening uh, at the very beginning that first year, the changes just continue to blossom and grow and new opportunities um, with different groups and organizations. So it's a really great process, but you can't just kind of like flip the switch and, and there we are, it's a STEM school now. It's going to be some, some work. Um, Mrs. Skaggs and I have tried to do some planning. We actually meet now every week, um, once a week we meet just to talk and talk about ideas and how are things going and what's the conversation among our staff and what are the worries and what are the concerns and how can we help and ideas. Uh, so we're doing a lot. However, we really need to start digging even deeper into the work, to be quite honest, um, if this is the direction that we're planning to move. So to that end, I'm really seeking uh, the board's blessing to move forward um, with a plan to open the doors of Thorpe Gordon STEM Academy in the fall of 2023.
Questions for Dr. Hogg. Erica.
Dr. Hogg, how do you envision your staff in that building changing? Will you need additional staff? Will staff have the option if maybe they don't feel it's a right fit for them and maybe they want to apply elsewhere?
I think those are all conversations to be had about how we deal with that. Um, my experience in the past is you have, some people are like, I love science, math, engineering, and they want to get on board. Um, you have somewhere like, mm, that maybe is not what I want to do, so maybe the opportunity to transfer to other schools has a normal transfer policy that we have, a process we already have in place. Um, sometimes you get people who think that they're not as interested in the STEM, and then all of a sudden they get into it, start to learn more about it, and it becomes a passion for them. Um, I had a previous teacher in my, in my building who was an art teacher and, or a music drama kind of teacher. That's why I hired her, because she was just very charismatic and all of that, but she fell in love with STEM. In fact, she no longer teaches. She went, went to work for NASA and worked in the NASA Education Department because she just was so passionate about teaching other people about science and engineering and math. So um, I think we have to have conversations around that. How do we make sure we have the right people in the right place?
Well, just so you know, I have heard from a handful of educators that are very excited and hope they get the opportunity to apply someday, so that's good feedback.
Great.
They just want to work for Delora.
That might be the case.
That's the whole case.
Dr. Hogg, question about, uh, so you mentioned that we're currently below capacity at Thorpe Gordon. Uh, are the renovations, are we looking at any changes, potential renovations that would expand the capacity of the building?
No. The, the footprint of it, of the building itself will stay the same. So the classroom spaces that we have now will stay the same.
Okay.
But right now, just so you know, I think, uh, let me see, I have it written down here. So we have about 280 in the building right now. Um, so that's about 16, 16 and a half kids per classroom. You can have a half a kid, but that's what it is. Um, so we have the potential, you could raise it four kids to get to 20, uh, which is still a reasonable class size, which means we could add an additional 50 to 70 kids at Thorpe Gordon. That's a lot, so.
All right.
Definitely room.
Great, great.
Well?
I, I don't, you need a, a motion from us or a, uh, official endorsement or, uh, I mean, if that's what was needed, I, I would absolutely love to, uh, to make a motion that we endorse.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be on our new business 7C, so.
Oh, okay.
Well, uh, when we get there, we can move forward, but uh.
I just have one quick question. Are there any concerns about uh, technology at that older building as far as renovations go? I mean.
Joe.
We already have plans to incorporate.
Okay.
Great. Well, thank you. It's exciting. And Erica is right, there's a lot of people want to go work for Delora. That's why they're going over there.
I'm not surprised at all.
You're done? You're done? Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McGraw? Okay. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Blue?
Hello, I just have three um, really updates or three bits of information for you all um, centered around teacher retention and recruitment. Um, first, we are beginning to recognize positive attendance of our staff, so we know that we're still, you know, dealing with um, the need for substitutes some days, but we also want to recognize positive staff attendance. So starting small, um, we recognized staff attendance by building for the months of August and September, and so uh, these are the percent of staff attendance, all in the 90s. Um, and so congratulations to Morel Heights. They had the highest staff attendance for the months of August and September, and so we treated them with lunch for their staff and a dress down day, and so we'll do that every month, and then our hope is to move to um, explore other ways to promote positive um, staff attendance and recognize individual uh, staff attendance um, records. And so I just wanted to share that with you. And then I wanted to update you on Career Ladder. So we had a tremendous response to Career Ladder. We have 500 participants, and we received a grant from the state for $1.3 million, which uh, Sherry is going to talk about a budget amendment. Um, but the state had earmarked $30 million for Career Ladder, and Jeff City received 1.3. So uh, it was, it was a great turnout. Teachers are very excited. We're very excited about their um, enthusiasm for professional development and tutoring students, and so all around, um, I feel, I feel great about that. So um, that's also a piece of the teacher recruitment and retention. And then the third um, piece I just wanted to share with you and will be sharing with staff, um, is that we received a small grant for college reimbursement for staff. So um, it is a, a small start, but for nine hours of college credit, teachers and paras can receive a reimbursement of $500. Um, and we are asking them to sign a contract to teach with us um, for the following year. So when they complete nine hours of college credit, they can be reimbursed, reimburse $500, and then once they earn their advanced degrees on the pay scale, then they also move over horizontally. So all efforts to um, recruit and retain our staff.
Great. Any questions? Yes?
How many staff positions do we have open right now that we still would love to fill?
Do we already have para facility and maintenance?
And that's total, not just certified, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. McGraw, the bond discussion options, if you don't mind?
Yes, uh, for those of you, a couple of weeks ago, we had a work session with the board to discuss, uh, and we had Lorenzo Boyd from Stifel present to the board options as far as a uh, no tax increase bond initiative that potentially would be on uh, the ballot for uh, April, and we talked about some of the projects and possibilities we could do um, if we were to move forward with that uh, bond initiative. So um, some of the things that we discussed, uh, we gave the board a variety of options, um, and you can see displayed on the board there, option one, two, and three. The ma, a lot of them are in every option. Uh, technology upgrades, which was asked by Ann regarding Thorpe, uh, these upgrades would go throughout the district. Jody, want to maybe give a, a little bit on, on the, what we do?
Sure, um, I think I spoke a little bit maybe at the, or the work session, but it is upgrading at every elementary, every middle school. Um, the smart board and projector that is in the classroom now, it's been in, in, at outdated technology for a while, so we finally have the opportunity for some funding, so it'll, those two things will be replaced with an interactive panel like what we put in Jeff City and Capital City when Jeff City was remodeled. So it'll mirror those classes.
Bel Air is on that list, and that would be uh, an update to the first floor, uh, which was not renovated in the last renovation of the facility, and also potential road in the back for parent pickup, uh, which it kind of gets jammed up there in the, in the, specifically the afternoon. Um, in there, Miller Center, uh, and J C A C a little bit lower. Obviously, they share the same uh, building, but that building has a lot of the original uh, pieces of it. Boiler Frank, 19. 1938. We should give it to the young man with the. Um, so pretty much every room in there. HVAC uh, needs to be repaired in the building as well. The Miller Center, we talk about uh, uh, lights, uh, speakers, all audio equipment for plays and recitals and things that go on there. Those things age out over time, and they are obviously needed um, uh, for the, for, you know, not only used by our kids, but the whole community for a variety of, of things. Um, Nichols Career Center, we talked about a building trades uh, and, and an ag building, uh, potentially across the street from Thorpe on the land that's next to uh, the baseball, softball, soccer complex. Um, Southwest Early Childhood Center upgrades there uh, as well. That building uh, needs to be renovated, completely renovated. Completing our athletics facilities, mainly uh, biggest ticket item there would be a tennis facility at uh, Jefferson City High School, which would be located across from the football field. We're remodeling both middle schools. We did do lighting and, and roof and ceiling tiles, new there, but there's also additional things. Uh, those buildings were built in 1993, so uh, we're, we're coming on 30 years old. So I've heard people say new buildings since I've been in town, and 93 is, I guess it's, I guess it's young. I guess it's young. Um, and then building, window updates at a variety of different uh, elementary schools and buildings throughout the district. The main thing in option one that we talked about was paying off our $9 million energy cops, and what that would do if we were able to pay that off is free up uh, approximately $750 to $800,000 of operating budget, and the goal of doing that would be to free up some money to commit towards staff salaries. So uh, that's why that is in there as an option one. And then option two, uh, so basically option one would be no new construction of buildings. Option two has many of the same things, uh, paying off the cops as well and the renovations, but uh, adding an early childhood center. Um, talked about in the meeting, the land that is located uh, next to Lewis and Clark, the football field there, uh, that land uh, would be used to increase our early childhood opportunities for the district. Right now, you know, we service uh, students of poverty as well as special needs, and looking to expand on those options for the community. We've been in meetings uh, with the Lieutenant Governor as, as, you know, just last week where, and workforce, looking for uh, trying to get parents back to work. Well, you know, childcare is an issue in the community, you know, getting kids to school earlier, getting them in our environment, getting them reading earlier uh, would be an advantage to, to us as a whole, to not only the district but the, but the community. So the potential of building a new facility over on that side of town, and then uh, potential of still having those buildings in place where you would uh, move J C A C to Southwest in that option, and you would be able to expand the program at J C A C to have more alternative options for kids uh, that are struggling in school. Um, would be part of that, and then taking the Miller Center and making it more of a professional, not Miller Center, but J C A C part of the Miller Center, make that more for professional development and community engagement activities and things of that nature. Both of those buildings still need to be updated where they're at now, but it would just give it a, a different look. And then option three uh, was uh, all of the same thing, but what you would be uh, adding instead of the um, the, the movement there would be to add East, a new East Elementary School on that land I talked about, having an early childhood center. So um, just a different option. All the other things are in there as far as technology updates, Bel Air, Nichols, Southwest Early Childhood uh, Center renovation. Uh, what we would look to do is move J C A, if we were to build a, a new East Elementary, we look to move J C A C into the present East Elementary School because that has more rooms than what J C A C presently has. So option two and three would allow us to expand our alternative programs uh, for opportunities for, for kids who are struggling um, in, in our, in our, in our schools. So um, I know there's a lot there, but a lot of it is consistent. Um, so there, there, you know, you're, you're talking about things that we really need to talk about and have work sessions on and meetings and, and some conversation here with, with the board and community upcoming would be uh, you know, deciding between those, those options. All of them are a win for the district. We get better by doing this. It's uh, just what route uh, uh, we want to take to, to, to get better. So I, any questions, conversations are welcome on the topics, or even if you want to ask. We have Frank here. He could give you specific details on what needs to be done in buildings that are on there. Um, so any of those questions, you know, we'd be glad to take. You know, from early childhood standpoint, Heather can, can give you some other details with Troy. Um, just any, anything you have for them, feel free to ask.
Go ahead, Ken.
Brian, on the um, question of, you know, enrollment and capacity of buildings and so forth, um, do we have the opportunity to maybe engage with the, the firm that uh, we worked with on the redistricting to maybe update some data? Um, not a full blown study like they did, obviously, but um, I would think that maybe if we could just get some updated data, statistics and census data from them, that would help us know about uh, again, the need for additional buildings on the, in the elementary discussion or whatever.
Yes. Yeah, cooperative strategies with the company we contacted with, and they have all our data, and we can, we would definitely have that conversation with them.
I would encourage us to at least reach out to them and see, you know, if we could engage them on a limited basis to help us provide some of that information because, I mean, as, as Jackie commented, that, you know, discussions were many, many years ago, and so I think we all have to, I, I mean, we're responsible for today and going forward, so I'd, I'd want us to make, you know, those decisions based on good data.
Sure.
Erica?
What is the timeline if the board were to approve option one, two, or three? Next steps?
The next steps would be, would be on the ballot. Uh, you would, uh, we would have to confirm the ballot language by January. So I hope would be somewhere at the December meeting, we would solidify where we, we were with some of the details. Then the language would be confirmed for January, it would go to the ballot in April, and then we would start the planning process for, depending on what option we took, the improvements. We would, we couldn't do all of them at once, but as Lorenzo explained, Sherry, do you want to run the bonds, you can?
Yeah, and basically, you, when you have a bond vote, you can vote 85 million, you don't have to issue them all at once. So you would just issue the bonds as you were using them. So um, whatever we decide is the highest priority initially, or something that can be done initially, we would uh, we would do those bonds first, and then you would issue uh, the second set or the third set later on.
So if hypothetically, if the board in the district approved one of these options, the people of our county vote on it, and it's approved, would we be able to increase salaries as early as next school year?
Well, if they approved that, one of the, the initial things we could do is pay off the cops. That's easy. That doesn't take any construction or anything like that. So yes, um, we could pay those off immediately, and that would free up 800,000 of operating funds.
Great. Thank you.
And technology wise, Joe, how quick would be a turnaround?
So the, currently.
I know they're just laying around.
Currently, there's not a supply issue with them, so we could, we could get started immediately once it's approved.
Yeah?
Um, and if I remember from that work group. And if I remember from that work group meeting, once we issue a bond, we have three years to spend it, right? Okay.
Yeah, there is no really hard and fast rule, but what you want, you want to kind of try to stick to that timeline.
Look forward, hopefully bring in, figure out what we want to do in December and have it on the docket for April. Thank you. Thanks for all you guys on your hard work on this and bringing it to us and.
I stopped showing it to Frank because the prices keep going up.
And I agree, this is a win for the district, no matter which one we pick, one, two, or three. All right, moving along. Number six on the agenda tonight is consent agenda items. I would entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Leonard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Enlow. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to number seven on the agenda tonight, new business. A, Mr. McGraw, Superintendent McGraw.
So policies that were approved and forwarded from the policy committee meeting are regarding BBE, which is school board vacancies and the process to fill that if you were to have a director resign. That's BBE. GBLB is requests for references to prior employment and disclosing certain offenses of former employees. JFCL is the final one, and that's the A-plus schools program, and this is a language change which allows high school students to be able to use some of their A-plus money for dual credit reimbursement, which is if money is left there, which is a great opportunity for our kids. So those are the three that were discussed at the policy committee meeting a couple weeks ago and were asked to forward it to, up to the board for approval.
Any questions?
These are all in line with MSP or foundation primarily driven by legislation.
Yes.
Okay. So do we have to vote on the several, or can we vote on the three?
We can vote them all together.
Okay.
All at one. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ann. Second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Eyes have it, the policies have been approved. B, budget amendment. Ms. LaPage, talk about money.
Okay, tonight, we're going to talk about budget amendment one, first budget amendment of the year, reflects two significant changes in revenue. The county stock insurance line, which we've talked about in the past, can fluctuate greatly. We had budgeted pretty conservatively this year because we were high last year and we thought we would, it kind of goes up and then down and up and down. But it went up last year and it went up again this year. So it actually came in at 8.2 million. So we are adjusting the revenues to reflect that. Also, the second revenue item is one that Heather referred to earlier for the Career Ladder program. We're setting up the revenue line for the funding we would receive from the state, which is 1.3 million. And then also, within this reflects the expenditures for Career Ladder, which will be 2.2 million in total. So the state will pay 60% and the district will pick up 40%. But with our additional county stock insurance money, we can use that to pay our 40%. So with this budget amendment, we actually come out ahead of the game, so that's good. Other than that, we have just a few little miscellaneous revenue and expense items. There's some S R grants that have become available, smaller S R grants, one's teacher recruitment and retention. There's an IDEA K-12 and Early Childhood Special Ed Grant and the homeless children and youth grant. And so we've, we've set up revenue lines for all of those. And that's it.
Any questions?
So overall, is it a positive?
It's, yeah, overall, it's a positive. We think we may have a few more expense lines that we have to fit up or set up for Career Ladder on the benefit side, and we haven't done yet, but they should be pretty small, and we'll do that in the next amendment.
I think you'll have to approve.
Yes. I would entertain a motion to approve this budget amendment.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Leonard.
Second.
Second by Ms. Warren Blumke. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, the amendment has been passed. Thank you, LaPage. Moving on, C, approve the process of making Thorpe Gordon Elementary the district's first elementary STEM school. I think we had a really good discussion. Dr. Hogg did a great job explaining it to us. We've got a great leader at Thorpe Gordon, we know, that's going to lead it in the right process. I don't know what other discussion we really need to have, in my opinion. I mean, everybody who says it.
I want to make a motion.
Yeah, please, quickly.
And enthusiastically endorse moving forward with this process.
A big endorsement by Mr. Enlow.
Second.
Second by Ms. Warren Blumke. Any discussion? I better not hear any. I'm just teasing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. It's passed. All right, Delora, let's go. Future dates, Superintendent McGraw mentioned homecoming tomorrow at Capital City. They have the parade and everything tonight. We wish them the best. Safe weekend. Next regular board meeting is Thursday, the November 10th. Then we have Thanksgiving break for everybody, the 21st to the 25th. And then the first day of board candidate filing is December 6th, so anyone interested in running for school board, that's the first day you can come to the central office to file that you're running. And then the next meeting after that's December 8th, right back here. Well, who wants to take it? Because Lindsay's not here. And we're going to nominate Erica. Yes. Yes, in Lindsay's absence.
Thank you. A motion was made, no, this one?
No.
No.
Keep going, number nine.
Where are we? No, that's not it.
She's trying to do it so she never has to do it again.
If you're going to make a motion for them to suspend the regular meeting. I got too many cooks in the kitchen over here. Okay. A motion to suspend open, to enter into closed meeting, to suspend the regular meeting to enter into closed meeting. I just said that. Let's try this again. One, legal actions. Three, hiring, firing, disciplining. Thirteen, individually identified personal records. Fourteen, records which are protected from disclosure by law. The motion, no, 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 we're done. Okay.
You're fired.
There's a lot of notes.
I have a second.
I wasn't supposed to read the notes. Okay, got it.
Boy, we should have called Lindsay. Phone a friend. Wow. All right, where are we at here? At a second, and aye.
Ann was the second.
Ann was the second, yes.
Oh, I'm the second.
Roll call vote.
Okay.
We are all. Yes. All right, so this fun ship has closed. Everybody have a safe weekend. Thank you for coming out, appreciate what you do. We will start back up the closed session at 6:59. Holy cow, we'll start back up at 7:05.